Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the special meeting of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission. Can I get roll call, please?
Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Rosser? Commissioner Halloway?
President?
Commissioner Gabriel?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
Chairman Japshot?
Sort of here. I apologize for that. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to... Oops. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's anybody in the audience who would like to mention anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Can do so. If not, we'll move on to number four, public hearing of the Delray Oaks Planning Commission recommendations to city council regarding the draft housing element update and the adoption of the negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the... Step forward.
Hi, I'm Alice Green, and I live on Sosito Avenue. It seems to me that it's not possible to reasonably have a negative declaration on any project that involves water living where we do. I think it's that simple. It's not a good idea.
Okay.
It makes no sense.
Thank you. Yes. If you'd step forward, please. Our city manager.
Yeah. Sorry, we did that in a little bit reverse order, but it's a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I didn't tell you ahead of time. So commissioners, let me just highlight for you that the agenda item before you tonight is the recommendation to approve the negative declaration and the housing element to the city council for approval. I'd just like to highlight the process that we've gone through to date before turning it over to Denise Duffy to answer any questions. As you know, the housing element was submitted to the Housing and Community Development Department in Sacramento on the 18th of September for its 60-day review period. In October and November, we iterated with HCD on comments and had several informal discussions, and several revisions were made to the housing element. HCD's formal review letter was received on November 14th acknowledging that the housing element meets the statutory requirements of the law. In terms of public meetings, the city held three public meetings, workshops, and study sessions to help provide information to the public as well as to the commission and council. The planning commission reviewed the draft housing element at a hearing on September 11th, and on November 13th, I provided you a summary of where we were with the revisions and updates. The pursuant to SEQA, Denise Duffy and Associates published an initial study and a negative declaration for a 30-day review period on October 24th. Public comment was closed on November 22nd at 5:00 p.m. During that 30-day period, we received a total of four comments, and I'll leave that to Denise to review briefly with the planning commission. As you probably also know, should you recommend approval to the city council, and should the city council adopt the fifth cycle housing element, we will go immediately into the sixth cycle beginning January 1st, 2020. The adoption of a fifth cycle housing element is important for several reasons, one of which is we have not been compliant for several decades now, and our rules and regulations and policies have not been kept current with the evolution in state law. Adoption of a fifth cycle element will allow us to move forward with reviewing sixth cycle housing element, which the city staff fully intends to do, which will then allow us to become actually fully compliant once that sixth cycle housing element is adopted. And so I'll stop there and turn it over to you, Denise. Is that all right? And all of us, Alex, myself, and Denise will be available to answer any questions that you have.
Denise Duffy, Denise Duffy and Associates, I'm the city planning consultant for the project. Just one clarification on Dino's item. We're actually, 2015 to 2023 is the fifth cycle. What we are in is because the city did not adopt a housing element within 120 days of the end of the first four-year period of the fifth cycle, we have to prepare another four-year period. So normally, once we do get a compliant housing element, next time for the sixth cycle, we'll have an eight-year cycle. But because of the city not having a housing element for over a few decades and then not adopting one within the 120 days of the required mandate, we have... We will be adopting a housing element if you recommend that, and then we would go into the second four-year cycle, which takes us through 2023. Clear?
Yeah.
So I have only a few comments. I wanted to also mention that the... Of the four letters that were received, one of them was from OPR. It was received as of today. It basically states that there are no Office of Planning and Research, and basically it states that there are no other state agencies or any comments from any state agencies. It's essentially a transmittal note. The second letter that was identified in your staff report was regarding the housing element itself. It was a correction to a map. That was necessarily a correction and not on the housing element initial study. The third letter that we received at the end of the review period was from the Monterey Airport Land Use Commission, reminding us that in order to... If you have a general plan amendment, you need to go before the ALUC, the Airport Land Use Commission, for a consistency determination, and that meeting has been set for the 16th of December. And the fourth letter, if you will, was from Land Watch, which is in your packet. The essential comment there was that they identified that they felt that there was a need to prepare an EIR based upon their interpretation of SEQA, and also that there's water... The water use is an issue for them. We have identified... We have responses that we can talk to you about tonight on that, and the city attorney is here to answer any questions, but it's our feeling that an EIR would not be required for adoption of this policy element, housing element. It is a policy document, not a project-level document. Thank you. And tonight is for you to ask questions, and also if the public has any comments or questions. As the staff report indicates, once you've opened the public hearing, which I think you have, then you would close the public hearing and then make your recommendation after any questions. Want to talk about the staff recommendation?
Pardon?
Staff recommendation.
Oh.
Denise, yeah, I was referring to the staff recommendation, which I think you read, Chair.
Yes.
The staff recommendation is that you recommend the council adoption of the housing element and acceptance of the initial study and negative declaration.
Yes. I think at this point, we'll go out to... Go to commission comments or questions. Doug, do you have any?
Yes. My comment, and then I have a couple of questions, is one of gratitude. So thank you, Alex, and Dino, and Karen, and Kim, and everybody that did, and are very, I guess, wise helper. Denise, thank you, guys, for... There's a lot of work inside of this. There's a lot of detail that's important, and so I thank you for putting this all together. It makes sense to me, going from front to back. That doesn't mean that all things make sense in a "I recommend going forward" manner. So that's where my questions come from. So with gratitude, and please don't take these in any other way, in that great job, hard work. My first question is for you, Denise, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to go to the other meetings. It's what are your personal qualifications for doing work like this, and do you have other cities that you have actually executed this type of work for?
Do you want to just go through your list of questions?
We can do that, yeah. Does that sound okay?
Absolutely.
That may at least everybody will have. Okay. My second question and subsequent, I think it's two, three, and four questions, all come from the letter that we received from... And I'll probably get this wrong. It was a lengthy letter, and it was all about contesting the negative declaration, and it came from... It was like first city or something.
Land Watch.
Land Watch, yes. Thank you very much for that. So the letter, I guess, from Land Watch, had a couple of points in it, and I'm curious as to the response about the groundwater points made in that letter. Everything from "we're basing a plan on something that doesn't even exist," and according to this letter, we could read it, probably in different ways. There's almost a stipulation that we will never have water rights like that, so how could we possibly ever plan on having something like that? I'd like at least a little more clarification on that. There's a note from Land Watch that said something about being inconsistent with the general plan, and I think the point there, and I think we owe it in some sense to be consistent with our general city plan, and the inconsistency noted, and I beg forgiveness if this is off a little bit, but it seems to me that that inconsistency is based on the way that we currently have these different parcels zoned. So we have a city plan or a general plan that says, "We plan on," and it's primarily business zoning zones that are associated with some of our... Some of the plots or pieces, like 1 and 1A. I think they mentioned that those are in the general plan. They're for business zoning.
Is there overlay, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. The overlay for the city. But we, in some sense, for our housing element, are saying, and this is me, my own language, "We're... We don't care about that. These can be..." And they can be, but these can be used to build different types of housing or that will help us put together our plan for this housing element. Okay, so that's that one. There's also a... There's a stated inconsistency, and it's from that letter again, from Land Watch, that says, "What about the four-door reuse plan?" I think in that... I wish I had more detail on this, and I know that Denise, I know you've probably studied these things backwards, and Dino and Alex, I know you guys have too. That's why I'm asking. It says in the four-door reuse plan that these parcels are also planned to be business places, not housing places. And I'm curious as to how this Land Watch could come up with that, stating that as an inconsistency. And the other piece I saw in there, this was not... This was not in the Land Watch piece, but there's... There is a piece within the housing element that says something about the city somehow facilitating, and I think it's for lower-income folks, facilitating lower-income either citizens, and they wouldn't be yet, but people in our area, facilitating them, and I read it as some way where we're going to help people with loans at something about market rates, whether we're... We, as a city, we, Delray Oaks, are trying to help, I don't know, influence, or guarantee, or help with the market rates, because we all know if the market rate is too high, that just in itself, as it goes up, it drops more and more people out of the market. So that's my final piece, is are we really, in Delray Oaks, planning on either helping with loans, or how does this market rate thing work? Thank you.
Okay. Should we answer those per council, or do you want to add? I think we'll get bombarded with a lot of questions, so would you mind answering those few questions?
Do you... And I'll just... Sorry for interrupting. Do you think we should get a register of all the questions and then try to answer? Or do you want to go group of questions, then answer?
Well, that's what I was going... Denise, how do you feel about that?
Yeah.
Well, I think there are a number of questions that were raised that we could address now with the city staff, and then we can maybe move on. If there's other questions that are different, we can move on to the other planning commissioners.
Yeah, I feel...
If that works for you. Let me make sure I got... So what are the qualifications for preparation of a housing element and initial study? Denise Duffy, me, have been in the business of land use planning and consulting for the last almost 37 years, and my qualifications are I'm the planning consultant for the city of Delray Oaks. I prepared the housing element originally, and then general plan update for the city of Delray Oaks in the 1990s. I have a solid resume of a number of different environmental impact reports, planning documents. We also prepared the 2006 housing element, and I'm happy to speak with you about that. I won't go on and on. There's hundreds of documents and planning documents, and the city has... Do you need to be qualified as an environmental consultant and planning consultant for the city, and I act as the city contracting planner?
Yeah, please don't take that as me challenging your professional qualifications. I just wanted to hear about them. And a subpiece to that question, Denise, was about not only the qualifications, but have you done a similar project that we would not call Delray Oaks? Have you done something similar in size and...
We've... I've done different housing elements for other jurisdictions, but they're not the same as the size. Thank you. The letter from John Farrow from Land Watch discussed the groundwater pumping, and your question was, "How can you plan on something that does not exist? We never have water. We never will have water," I think was the comment that you'd made. The housing element is a policy document. It does not pump groundwater. It is a policy document, and I think the response that the city has in reference to that letter is where the letter creates a significant impact that would require... That would require preparation of an EIR, and we have Alex Lorca, who's also here to speak about that. There was inconsistency with the general plan, and I think you noted that, "How can we have business, commercial use, as proposed in the general plan, and then identify this as potential residential property?" What actually the housing element does is identifies available sites, land use inventories, as required by state law, to identify where housing, affordable housing, to meet all economic needs of the community can be created with available land. And that is a requirement from the housing element. What the housing element did is identify each of those areas, and one of those areas was Site 1 and Site 1A in the housing element and in the appendix in the land use inventory. Those sites, that also goes along with the program that says, "If those sites are going to be developed, we would rezone and put a general plan amendment into the record, into the... On those sites to allow for residential development to occur." That is very similar to the housing element that you did as a draft in 2005, 2006 at the same location. The housing element is... Would be therefore consistent with the land use designations. I mean, it's a program to allow internal consistency. The consistency with the four reuse plan is the same answer. The four reuse plan has identified those sites, has identified the housing element basically provides facts, as does the initial study. The facts are that there's commercial zoning, visitor-serving rezoning, et cetera, on the former four-door lands. The other fact is that the city has long intended or has looked at those sites for potential residential development as well. In this case, the city is only looking at those sites to meet the regional housing needs assessment. The regional housing needs assessment is a total of 58 low and very low units, and the remainder of the 80s... A total... For a total of 86, the remainder is low and moderate units. I think that answers that question. The last comment... The last comment you raised was regarding a specific program and a policy within the housing element. You didn't give me a policy number, so I can't basically address that specifically. But while I'm looking, Alex, would you like to provide any additional information on any of the responses?
I think what's going to be important is, and to Commissioner Burton's point, is when an EIR is required as opposed to an initial study and negative declaration. So is that... Oh.
Alex Lorca, city attorney. So the question with regard to when is an EIR required, and I'll just give you some statements from SEQA guidelines, I think, that clearly capture it, and then you'll exercise your discretion, looking at the facts before you, to see if that test is met. And that is that an agency must prepare an EIR whenever substantial evidence in the record supports a fair argument that a project may have significant effect on the environment. Project here being the housing element. And I'll give you some language straight from SEQA with regard to what some of these terms mean. So with regard to a significant effect on the environment, this is from the SEQA guidelines, section 15382. Significant effect on the environment means a substantial or potentially substantial adverse change in any of the physical conditions within the area affected by the project, including land, air, water, minerals, flora, fauna, ambient noise, and objects of historic or aesthetic significance. An economic or social change by itself shall not be considered a significant effect on the environment. A social or economic change related to the physical change may be considered in determining whether the physical change is significant. So not all of that portion is relevant, so I'll just state again, significant effect on the environment, substantial or potentially substantial adverse change in any of the physical conditions within the area affected by the project. That's a significant effect on the environment. There's got to be substantial evidence in the record of that. And substantial evidence, as used in these guidelines, means enough relevant information and reasonable inferences from this information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion, even though other conclusions may also be reached. Whether a fair argument can be made that the project may have a significant effect on the environment is to be determined by examining the whole record before the lead agency. And then it gives us some examples. Argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, evidence which is clearly erroneous or inaccurate, or evidence of social or economic impacts which do not contribute to or are not caused by physical impacts on the environment does not constitute substantial evidence. Again, I give you the synopsis there. It's argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, or erroneous or inaccurate evidence is not substantial evidence. And then subdivision B, sorry, the code section here is 15384. Substantial evidence shall include facts, reasonable assumptions predicated upon facts, and expert opinion supported by the facts. So the project here is the housing element update. So this, we apply these tests to that and only to that. And I'm happy to repeat as needed.
Do you have... Sorry. Do you have an example of something that was close? I mean, we all can come up with the... Something that's substantial, that's... Of course it is. Like, we're going to dig down 500 yards and put a skyscraper in. Yeah, no kidding. Do you have an example of something that was close that you're familiar with, or maybe this is... Maybe Denise would have an example of something that was close, and it could be on either side.
Maybe Denise does. You know, the case law's pretty thin on housing element updates in this context. Maybe Denise, do you have... Follow your...
Something that was close to substantial, one way or the other. Either it was deemed substantial or a little bit less than substantial.
I'm afraid I can't answer your question. I'm not sure I quite understand it.
Do you have an example of something that would be substantial when it comes to...
Substantial meaning?
Yeah, substantial that would require a EIR, something substantial that would be EIR, that would force an EIR.
A development project where you have a direct impact on the environment in a former four-door area. If you may look in all the areas of former four-door, EIRs are required for all the development projects for the most part out there. So that's an example of when an EIR may be required. But I think your question might be a little too broad to answer directly. I'm happy to talk to you about it later, though.
You don't want to talk about it now? Okay.
But I should say this, you know, this... I think examples would be helpful, but really here, you've got to apply these standards to what's before you.
Got you. Just interested in something as an example. What would be determined to be substantial?
That's all.
So I could...
So I'm happy to talk to you more about SEQA and how SEQA is applied in the cases of a project, and that's what my reference was. If it's specific to a question on the document, please let me know.
Okay. Is anything else, Doug, that you wanted to clarify?
I'm going to look up the reference number, and I'll follow back, so I'd like to... Once I find that in here, that'll be a little more specific.
So were you referring to the program numbers that... There... The housing element plan has different areas of programs and policies. The policies are the broader policies, as we've talked about before, and the housing and then there's programs within those. The categories are housing opportunities to develop more housing, to provide affordable housing category, removing constraints to providing affordable housing, and equal housing opportunities as a constraint.
Denise, are you referring to the program E dot one?
I think so, too. And I just... And then the last one is equality housing opportunities, and that's on E dot one, assist in rehabilitating housing, so...
I have one of them. I just wanted to find the other one that I referred to before. This is a different one.
It could be deep in the equal housing opportunities section.
And with it? E dot one, Alex?
E dot one is... Talks about low-interest loans?
Yeah, I mean, is Delray Oaks going to... And I'm just... I can read it right from here. Investigate available low-interest loans, subsidies, and grants from federal, and to provide rehab funds. And the city then provides grants and/or low-interest deferred and/or forgivable loans for building code. But I mean, this is the city giving loans. I'm concerned about the city providing loans to anyone, including the richest person on the planet. Doesn't matter. That's why I saw this and I flagged it in my...
So this is the city's housing element.
Yep.
As the planning commissioner, if you have a question or change or request for revision, then it's up to the city planning commission to deliberate, look at language, and provide any recommendations you may have. And that was one of those element policies that were... Part of it was in the previous housing element.
Yep.
And so it's continued to be on, but I think that's a consideration that the planning commissioners may want to discuss.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the questions, because we are... We do... I would think we do want to discuss it, and it's part of it.
Any other questions?
If I may?
Yeah.
It's a great question. Let me just try to address it this way. So the policies that you are considering tonight to recommend to the council for adoption In many cases, they are aspirational. They set forth a vision for...
They set forth a vision for where the city wants to go with regard to housing opportunity across the income spectrums in our city. It certainly does not mean that we hereby, with the adoption of this housing element, commit to offering low interest loans and so on. What, if you go back and look at the language, what it does do is it commits us to exploring the potential for financing that may allow for low interest loans, that may allow for various mechanisms to make housing affordable and available, more specifically, available to a broader selection or broader spectrum of socioeconomic groups. So, it's worth noting, I think, at this point, that these policies are forward-looking. They're aspirational in planning, by design. They are years in terms of time horizon, and they are broadly stated. So, I just want to put that in context, because it not only applies to the question you have, Commissioner, it applies to every policy across the board.
Those are using other agencies' money, though, not Delray Oaks' money.
Correct. As it's stated, we would pursue grant funding.
It would be looking for money, but it's not our money. We're not committing to putting any money up.
Right. As it relates to the other questions raised, the water issue obviously is very sensitive for a variety of reasons. It's worth noting that there is currently no water available in the city property. And we are listing in the housing element, under available land inventory, parcels in the city property. And interestingly, there is no challenge. There is no water. Because it's very easy to get very myopic on the former forward very quickly, for a lot of reasons. And just keep this citywide and broad as a planning document, long-term vision.
But when the CDO is lifted, though, there will be water available.
The CDO is not.
No, I understand that.
And you are considering approval of a document with the current conditions in place.
Right. I'm saying this, there is a CDO that, 2021 is supposed to be lifted. If it is lifted, either through DSAW, Pure Water Monterey, whatever, then water would be available.
All very hypothetical.
Well, everything we're doing, as you say, is very forward-looking.
All very, but the case, the hypothetical you just laid out is not anywhere in the document you're considering.
Well, but I would say, well, I'll talk more in a minute. But I would say you make an army of the water for words somewhat hypothetical as well. But we'll talk about that in a minute.
Well. The only reason it is in the documentation, it's not in our housing element, but it's in that letter from whatever those guys are, Land Watch. It's in there.
You bet it is. So, I think one of the things that would illustrate what you have before you is, to Commissioner Krieger's point, it could be that the city does loan money, as many jurisdictions do, to elderly, low economic households in order to facilitate rehabilitation. I guess the point is that these are policy and aspirational goals. If and when the city decided to implement something like that, you'd have environmental review at that time. But it really does illustrate the point that these are goals. It's a policy document. Something is drilled down and granular to that is for future consideration of a future act.
And we probably wouldn't do that unless we had grant money.
I just want to clarify something. The summary of the Delray Oaks land use inventory of available sites is available from both the housing element and the letter. The reason that the letter references it is because it's on Appendix B, the land use inventory. And what we're required to do, state law requires that an adequate site's inventory contain four components. Identify vacant or underutilized parcels. An adequate land inventory consists of a listing and a map of properties proposed to accommodate the regional housing needs. Analyze site constraints. A site analysis should demonstrate that proposed sites can count towards the RHNA, and they should not have significant environmental infrastructure constraints that might affect the timing or feasibility by the end of the planning period. They can reassess the development capacity of each of the sites and demonstrate that zoning is adequate. So, I think the summary of the land use inventory in Appendix B does go through all of those sites and identifies all the constraints that are within the city of Delray Oaks for each development of any of these sites. And I think the document appropriately identifies that there's constraints with each of those sites, one through four.
Okay, we'll move on to Doug, or excuse me, Scott.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Really appreciate it. I have two questions, and it's geared towards city staff. The first one is, can you provide an update of the water allocation as it currently stands with the Monterey Coast Water District? And also, provide an update on where we stand with agreements to those water rights based on FORA? And once FORA sunsets, what kind of agreement we'll have in place?
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. The answer is that the city has an allocation of water that is from FORA, from the Army before that, through FORA to the city of Delray Oaks. We have a potable allocation and a non-potable allocation. And I can check the precise acre fee, but I don't want to misstate them. They are on record. The Marina Coast Water District, as you know, is the water purveyor on the former forward properties. They are committed to providing that water to not only our jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions as well. We are in negotiations with the Marina Coast Water District on an agreement that will take effect at the sunset of FORA, effective June 30th, 2020. And in that agreement, Marina Coast continues to commit to providing the city of Delray Oaks the exact same potable and non-potable water allocation. Now, frankly, the source water for that is really up to the water provider to determine. And that's an area that the Land Watch letter gets into and people get into very, very easily. But from a customer perspective, the city of Delray Oaks in this case is a consumer. We look to the purveyor to meet the commitment. The source water for that commitment is really up to Marina Coast Water District to determine. They have remained steadfast in their commitment to provide that water, and we see no reason that they won't.
Thank you. No more questions.
Okay.
So, Denise, you know, we belated this a couple of months ago. We tentatively approved, or we approved to send it to the state. Can you kind of paraphrase what the state, what changes they've wanted us to make? I mean, I wouldn't go into all the details line by line, but just in essence, what did they come back to us with?
Certainly. So, the HCD received their review copy on September 18th. And then they did what's called an informal review. We basically did a track changes version showing all of HCD requested changes and posted that on the city's website twice already. Essentially, one of the changes that they asked for was specific to the land suitability. They asked that we, instead of showing four sites as available to provide housing for the, meet the RHNA, the regional housing needs, they focused on the fact that there's a CDO, and there's no water availability currently on the peninsula. And they are used to all the other housing elements within the peninsula. And requested the Site 1A be the site to be used for the Very Low and Low, which is the city-owned site that's on this side of South Boundary Road. That's within the former forward was one of them. They asked for more specific language on a number of different policies. And they asked for more of a commitment, will, instead of may, consider. And they asked for specific timelines that identified exactly when these things could occur. Just a note, the housing element, as it states in the housing element, doesn't mean that you need to construct any of these housing units, per se. That's as stated in the housing element and law. But it does mean that you need to plan for, to have available sites available where they could be constructed or built. Does that answer enough of the questions, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Jeremy?
I have not prepared any questions. It was my understanding, as per the agenda, that this would be more so a hearing and a presentation by yourself and staff and the public, of course, and that we would make a decision based on the very thorough study and information that you've provided us with. A little backstory on me. When I first started my appointment with the planning commission, I thought to myself, self, why do we have this outside consulting firm, these outside contractors to do the work for us? We're the planning commission, and shouldn't we be doing all of these studies and whatnot? And I've come to realize that the reason for that is that I personally wouldn't know where to start without your vast education, experience, and knowledge, and legal consults, and city management experience. Again, I just, I wouldn't have a clue. It's, again, a realization that I've had is to try my best to understand the accumulation of the material that you've provided us and the public with, which we have had the opportunity to view. You've hosted several special meetings, study sessions, where we've had an opportunity for question and answer, public comments. We've gone through the appropriate review periods and had an opportunity for discussion, deliberation. The review has been sent to HCD, revised, and whatnot. And I understand now that we're at the point, having received, again, thank you for all of your hard work, all of the information, to cast a decision more so on said information. I suppose the only question I would have had, I hadn't been privy to any of the written letters, and the Land Watch letter did take me aback just a bit. But thank you for clarifying that we are in no way at the project level, that we're just approaching the policy establishment level based on our decision tonight. And there will be much more time and space for further deliberation and to hash off the details. So, to make a long story long, no, I have no questions.
Okay. Well said, though. Gary?
Well, I'm going to take some of your time, Jeremy. This has been fun. Twenty-two years since we've done it. It's been a big learning curve. I think, to say the least, lots of hard work that commissioners have noted. Very appreciated. Just a note on the process, it was noted earlier on about process. I just, the September, November planning commission meetings, public presentations, the city council presentation, through all that, there was never any mention about the non-disclosure. I just thought that might have been an interesting thing to bring up at some point. Fairly significant in all of this. To me, the issue seems to be timing.
Why not a negative?
I mean, that's what I say. Negative declaration, I'm sorry, non-disclosure. I've been watching too much news. Thank you. The negative declaration. The issue seems to be timing. I don't even want to get into the water stuff, because we will never solve that here tonight. And that's not even what's important to us. What I'm concerned about is what affects us. And that seems to be the timing of the EIR. There is no doubt that no matter what the allotment is, whatever piece of paper, before anyone pulls a drop of water, the occupiers, there's going to be lots of EIR work done. It's not war intrusion, overdrafting, how they're connected. We read about it every week. So, we know that's going to happen. So, all this dropped on Friday afternoon, and I had nothing better to do this weekend. Yeah. So, you know, I figured we'd dig into this. And I particularly wanted to go read the, reading through the Land Watch letter. I was, I wanted to go and check out the legal opinions they cited. They cite a couple of cases, and I wanted to read them for myself. So, I went and looked them up. And about, do we need to do an EIR for the general plan change? And I just thought it was a couple of interesting things I would note. And the Bozen versus Laffco down in Ventura County. And they're talking, and they cite Section 21151, which requires all local agencies to prepare and certify an EIR on any project they intend to carry out or approve, which may have a significant effect on the environment. They go on to say, the definition of a project contained in Section 21065 is basically any activity directly undertaken by a public agency. Paragraph two later, they state, and this is the court, this is the appeals court that was, it was actually the California Supreme Court, ruling on the SEQA. Obviously, SEQA is itself its own thing, but this is the court, the Supreme Court ruling on these cases. And they said that the adoption of a general plan is a project. I mean, that seems pretty straightforward. And they go on to talk about the tearing and the fact that, yeah, when you have one early on, the specificity of it may not be that great, but you still have to do one. The other case was the Costner versus the county of San Joaquin. And it says that EIR for the general plan does not have to be as precise as a specific project EIR. Once again, we're not doing a project yet, so it doesn't have to be that specific. Okay? But the difficulty of assessing future impacts of adopting a general level plan does not excuse preparation of an EIR. So, I read these, and I mean, it seems to be saying that if you're doing a general plan change, according to the rulings from the Supreme Court, you probably need to do an EIR. And then it gets down, the fair assessment, the fair argument test. I think Land Watch's expert, Mr. Timothy Parker, provided a fairly substantial report, which is, I would, now I went back and tried to read some more, understand more about SEQA law. And it seems my layman's interpretation, whatever I was reading, which I'm glad I'm not a lawyer. But it made my head hurt, get my appreciation, and I don't know. But reading through there, it seemed to me like the SEQA was, if it's a pretty low bar for someone to trigger, like, yeah, you need to be doing one. So, if we don't do one, it's pretty easy to meet this fair argument test and say, no, yeah, you do need to do one. On the other hand, once you do it, it seems to be pretty easy for the city to go, we got our own expert. And the courts will go, yeah, okay, we don't care about the other one. We'll listen to your expert. So, it just seems like if there is a, any doubt at all, it's going to be pretty easy for someone to go in and challenge us in court. The bias really seems to be towards doing the EIR. And my concern is, we're going to find ourselves in court again. And I appreciate the significance of getting this done by the 31st. I mean, I know what's hanging on that. But I also know the significance of finding ourselves in court again. And, you know, and that's not going to make it happen any faster either. So, I'm, as I'm reading through here, I guess it looks to me like we need to be doing an EIR, even if it's just a cursory, rough one. But yes, to do a negative declaration does not seem like it's going to fly. And I think we're going to get challenged. And I think we're going to be, it's going to go all stop, but we have to go to court and sort it out. But that's what I took away from my light reading this weekend. No real questions. I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe I'm completely wrong on that, but that's what it seems like as I read through it. Thank you.
My take is that I have a tough time thinking about doing an EIR and not really having a project. I, do an EIR on what project? There is no project, contrary to what you just said.
No, no, no. You don't have to have a project. That's what I'm saying. They say if you make a general plan change, they say that triggers an EIR. They say if you make a general plan change, they say that triggers an EIR. Or, I mean, that's what, that's what they say.
So, general plans, the general plans are acknowledged as projects under SEQA. The question then becomes what you do about it, and you do an initial study, and, you know, if there's a significant impact on the environment and supported by substantial evidence, yes, you do an EIR. So when you say do SEQA, yes, it is a project and therefore SEQA review is required, the outcome of that has been negative declaration. And I think that's the distinction to what you were discussing. You're correct, it's a very low threshold. The city's not entitled to deference with its decision. The question is, will what you were going to approve, the housing element update, will that have a significant effect on the environment? Or is it a broader policy document, and to Chairman Jackshot's point, what would the EIR analyze in this housing element update?
Yep, that's, I agree. So that was sort of my only comment, and I can't stress more what Jeremy said. I think there was a huge amount of work, I really appreciate all the work that goes into this. I depend on you guys to do a lot of work, because to read this and understand all of it is beyond me, so I appreciate it. A lot of the questions, I didn't have a lot of questions, but a lot of stuff was clarified by some of the questions that were already given. So unless, there are some other questions.
I do have a question. Based on Commissioner Krieger's comments, I would ask Denise, have you ever experienced throughout your time in your position, a situation where one of the housing elements that you facilitated with updating was contested in court? And if so, can you offer some, some details on that situation and how it ultimately was adjudicated?
I don't have an experience where a housing element was contested, a general plan amendment, maybe I'm trying to remember. But the, you know, the challenge under SEQA is essentially, I mean, Alex may wanna address it, I did talk to HCD about typically what is covered, what type of environmental documents are used for housing elements, and typically what the housing elements are covered under initial studies, negative declarations, some of them are considered exempt depending upon the project. Alex is correct, the first thing under SEQA, you define as what is the project? And then if, then you determine, you do an initial study to determine what would be the impacts of that project through the initial study checklist. We didn't come in coming with a determination that this is only gonna be this way or that way. If the initial study had found that there would be a significant impact on the environment, then we would have recommended a different approach, that's our job. And in the future, as people have mentioned, the, if there's another project that, that moves forward, that is a significant, that has a significant impact on the environment based upon, based upon all the analysis, whatever that project may be, then we make the same determination. Is it initial, you do the initial study, you make, you do the checklist, and then you determine if it's a neg deck or an initials, or an EIR. So, in this case, the, the benchmark is a policy document, and also it's very important to, to understand that we're looking at a certain number of potential units within the city to, to be planned for, and policies surrounding those, development of policies and programs to create more affordable housing in the city. It's a planning document, a policy document that you draw down from to then create more implementation programs. Even implementing the programs doesn't necessarily create a house that's going to draw water from an aquifer, whatever aquifer it is, or within, whether in Water Management District or the Marina Coast Water District, Seaside Groundwater Basin, or Salinas Groundwater Basin. But it's essentially, it's physical impacts on the environment that we're evaluating and whether or not there's those direct or indirect impacts that would create a significant impact.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm a, a big advocate of low-income, affordable housing, and I know within the housing element, they've specified, or we've specified in there, not only low and affordable housing, but also housing that focuses in on seniors, city employees. I would actually like to see that expanded. I know, being the husband of a retired teacher, how difficult it is for teachers to stay in the area, and, and really, it's a shame that a number of teachers have had to leave this area because they can't afford to live here. So I think we can even expand that and make affordable housing specifically for teachers. Also, police, I mean, we talked about city employees, I think, or police officers, I see it as a good thing that people can live where they work, and if, if we can do that, absolutely, I support that, and I think that's a good thing for the city, I think it's a good thing for, for the citizens. And what I've tried, tried to do is take this huge binder and kind of break it down into simple terms, and really what it comes down to is, if you are for affordable housing, there are essentially five places we can do it. Two of them are on the former Fort Ord. The other three are within the city limits. Our housing element proposes that we put affordable housing on the former Fort Ord. Land Watch proposes that it be done within the city limits. And I would say that even if we had available water within the city limits on those three sites, which is 17 acres, the area between Safeway and the Garden Center, and accessory dwelling units, granny units, even if we had water for that, there would be complete outrage in the city if we tried to develop something there. There's no question about it. I think the citizens of this city have zero appetite to build anything within the city limits, and I've lived that. It was a year and a half ago, I proposed a project out at 17 acres that would develop 1% of the area out there, and there was also another proposal that proposed a lot more, a greater development, and I think it showed how ridiculous it would be to develop that 17 acres. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that later. But, if you look at those two options, if you support affordable housing, you look at those two options, I think the only option we have, the most viable option we have, is to do it out at the former Fort Ord. There were questions about EIR. We heard Denise's qualification, she's highly qualified, her firm has been doing this type of work for years, she's competent, I trust her professional judgment, in that she says there's no EIR that is required. We heard from the city manager that the water that is proposed for Fort Ord is there, we have been allocated water, and the agreement that is in place with FORA, even when it goes away, it'll still be there, that agreement to get that water will still be there. The other piece that Land Watch talks about is the rezoning of the different areas, that the Fort Ord properties would have to be rezoned. That's across the board, all five properties would have to be rezoned, whether it's out at Fort Ord or whether it is in within the city limits, regardless, that is gonna have to happen. I know there's a lot of issue with water, and, you know, don't even wanna go there, but it seems to me that Land Watch advocates that by 2021, there's gonna be additional water. I mean, they say it in the, in the letter that they sent. So it might be a situation, and most likely it'll be a situation, that anytime, or by the time something is developed out at Fort Ord, it's gonna be past 2021. So the water that's going through those pipes, the mixture, whatever is required, might not even be groundwater. If the, if the recycled water plants up and running can meet our demand, most likely that's what's gonna happen. And it might even be a situation where the city can say, hey, we don't wanna be part of Marina Coast Water District anymore at that point, whether it's Cal-Am or a public-run company, I'm sure they'll be looking for customers at that point. My big concern is that Delray Oaks have been left behind. You look at Marina, you look at Seaside, and what they've been able to do on the former Fort Ord properties, we're a city that's in debt, we've got property out there that can help us, our long-term viability, and I think we're being left behind, and those are my big concerns.
I wanna circle back, but do you know if you have any thoughts about that?
Just a couple, couple of comments from the staff perspective, based on Commissioner Donaldson's comments. I spoke to Michael DeLappa today, and I spoke with John Faro during the same conversation, and they made it crystal clear that if we simply say that we take one and one alpha out of the housing element, and we choose to develop our affordable housing on the 17 acres and the area behind Safeway, in other words, on, on city, current city property.
In ADUs, correct? Wasn't that the other part of it, was the ADUs?
If we develop affordable housing on current city property, which may include ADUs, certainly wouldn't be met through ADUs alone, but if we were to develop it on city property, there would be no challenge. So I just find it interesting that the EIR requirement is selective in its application by Land Watch.
Would that be because that right now, currently, Marina Coast is getting their water out of the aquifer and Cal-Am's not? I mean, what, I mean, that does seem to be a fairly clear distinction.
I, I don't know the rationale, my, my concern is...
I mean, reading it, that seemed like the rationale.
Yeah, it reinforces the point that the commissioners made, that, that if we develop in the city, we're okay, if we develop on Fort Ord where we currently have land available as well, there's a challenge. And so, so it does seem to be driving some decision-making for, for, for the city and placing it before you.
Well, and I totally agree with everything Commissioner Donaldson was saying, I mean, it's, it's critical. I, my point was simply hindsight, but we might have precluded all this by having some discussion, maybe doing the EIR to preclude any kind of action by Land Watch. Right now, the situation is, if we go forward with it, we're gonna find ourselves, I mean, you just said it, I, I kind of figured it was the case, but you just said it, I mean, they, they're gonna take us to court, so we're gonna be in court, and that's not gonna get us anywhere by the 31st, so I don't know. It's hindsight, I'm not sure how we get out of it now, but it might have been better to have had this whole discussion a little bit sooner, and, I don't know. Because, I mean, clearly, we are, we're all in agreement, we, we wanna fix this problem. I mean, it's a huge problem, and as, you know, a teacher now, I totally agree with you. It's, I don't know, my kids can't, my kids can't afford to live here. I'm with you.
Doug, was that it? Do you have anything else?
Just circling back, I will, upfront, I'll say that there was one dissenting vote when we recommended to send, send forward to the bigger city council, and that was me, if you couldn't guess who that may or may not have been, and that was me, and one of the points I made, and I just wanna make it one more time, is that calling something a policy has an unbelievable, even though it's, oh, don't worry about it, it's not a program, it's not a project, it's just a policy. Well, policy from our little town means something, and the minute it's written down and adopted as our policy, in this case, the housing element, it's amazing how those things grow legs. And Commissioner Krieger's comment about just wait for the lawsuits and things like this, that's, I would say, that's what I'm most worried about. When I think about risk management for our city, we've already got enough pressures on it. So, just thinking about what can go wrong should be a part of any policy, any strategic document, even though it doesn't specifically say, we're 100% gonna build on site one, and it's gonna be 73 units and et cetera, et cetera. I got that part, but it does not excuse us. So I said nay on the last vote, and these issues are still in here, remembering that a policy has a funny way of taking on the city, this is now a city policy, that somebody could potentially sue you over. In the last go-round, I asked two questions. One, where do, where do we get these population growth numbers from? Where is that? And I will tell you that this fair share idea, I'm all for it. I want Delray Oaks to do our fair share. I wanna have that affordable housing, yes, yes, and yes, and yes. We've gotta be careful, because we're not a big, we can't handle attacks on the city for whatever, litigation, and I think we've had recent experiences with that. So where are we getting these population numbers? That's where this expectation for Delray Oaks' fair share is coming from. The population goes from, what do you think about this? By 2030, Delray Oaks is gonna have almost a 50% increase. We have 1719, and these are according to the documents right now, and there's a projection we have 2,591 people in Delray Oaks in 2030. Where are they coming from? I know that we could say, remember, Doug, we have our aspirational document that says, we're gonna build these units? That's where the extra population will go. I got it. I'm betting that this is some formula at the bigger state level where people just say, you know, we expect California to grow. By the way, California's not growing, and anything that says that it's growing is not correct, and I wanna make sure that this plus 872 people, this projection, we need that, I'm, I'm concerned that our fair share is being calculated on that. I don't think we have the fair share right. I do not think, even from the old housing element, with this debt that we already owe of somewhere around, let's just say 50, we have a debt of 50 units, and now we're gonna pile on this new, the fifth version of this, and add another 17 or whatever, it ends up being about 70. We can get the exact numbers if you want. I think that's based on these estimates of population growth, it's wrong, we are not, we have not grown, I'd be interested in your comments on population growth. And the other one is this job growth thing. There's an expectation in Delray Oaks that we will go from 359 jobs to 432 jobs. I know that at 73 jobs, where is that, where, what is that? I just, for the life of me, don't believe that, not for a minute, and I think our fair share calculations are being done off of these numbers. That's a 20% increase. This one, I'll give it to them, it goes out to 2040, and trying to predict what's gonna be in place in 2040 is a, is a, is, it's almost ridiculous. So my initial thoughts about population growth and job growth are still there. I, I, I agree, we need affordable housing, we must protect ourselves, though, and by ourselves, I mean the city, from litigation, from whatever, whatever it is, and that's, if you want, anybody or all three wanna comment on that, I welcome it.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton, we did review your comments from the last Planning Commission hearing, and we hear you. The ambig... The ambig population forecasts and the Department of Finance, State Department of Finance forecasts that go into HCD, that go into the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, can be challenged and questioned. And we are in fifth cycle now, so we didn't, we don't have the opportunity to do that. However, for sixth cycle review, I would suggest that we look at the 20, you know, each year, look at the ambig population forecast, there are the new ones out. And then also, the city has directed us, and with the city, to work very closely at the time when the regional housing needs allocation comes out, from HCD down to the county, and we will be working with those individually to try and address your comment. So thank you.
Yeah, I know you guys will do that.
And I know you're doing it.
Chair, Council?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify some of the discussion we heard, said, you know, initial study, EIR, I don't want litigation from the initial study. There's nothing that precludes litigation after an EIR as well, and it's, it happens frequently. So just because you get to an EIR doesn't mean you're not exposed to litigation.
Okay, I, you know, you said what bad things, what good things could happen to, you know. So there's both sides of that story. There could be litigation, no matter what happens down the road, and I don't know if it's up to us to decide whether there will or will not be any litigation or EIRs. Before us is staff recommendation to, recommended to the city to adopt the housing element in a negative declaration. So that's what is before us.
Mr. Chair, I, I just have a few more comments. I alluded to it earlier regarding the 17 acres. You know, like I said, I started that, this discussion about a year and a half ago. My proposal advocated 1% of 17 acres to be developed, which identified, also identified over 13 acres that I recommended be rezoned and held as non-developal land, developable land, parkland, rezone it, never to be developed, over 13 acres. Since I did that, nothing has happened. There's a map within our packet here that shows what areas on 17 acres are developable and which areas are not. I have done extensive research for a long period of time over 17 acres, and I will tell you, there is no more than about 3.8, 3.9 acres that could ever be developed. I think we should do the right thing, rezone 17 acres in accordance with what I proposed, and that needs to be part of this document. If you look at the map that is in our packet, it shows questionable potential, and it shows close to eight acres out there that could be developed. Like I said, I think we should call it like it is. This needs to be rezoned within this document. I think we owe it to particularly the citizens that live up on the Oaks. I know there's a lot of anxiety with those individuals that live up there. The majority of the area that I propose to be rezoned as parkland and never to be developed is in their view shed. I know that's a huge concern of them, of the folks that live up there. I absolutely think it's the right thing to do. And until that's done, based on what I see in this, this packet, I don't, I don't think I can support this housing element as it goes forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this is a shop standpoint in time that was done some time ago. So if we have more information that specifies that there's a more limited area that would be allowed for any development, then I would suggest that we make that correction and clarification and include the more recent maps with the correct acreage that puts some of that history back in from the last year and a half.
And what does that show on your map? How much acreage? And where is the, the non-developable, developable acreage located?
I think what we would do is go back to your more specific maps that you have and try and put those, you know, more recent information, and this was done some time ago, so I can get with you and get with the city to try and reduce the amount of developable land that, consistent with what the, the resources are out there now, that I think has maybe provided more information since the, which we didn't incorporate into this document.
Does it show that area being rezoned?
Nothing shows this area to be rezoned for residential at this point. The city planning commission can make a recommendation to the, to the council that we also include this area for rezoning, if that's what you're looking for, or, but at this point, though, that site is identified as a vacant site that, you know, you have to look at vacant land within the city limits, and that's how we reviewed it. And we identified that there's a number of constraints on that site, and in Appendix B in the land use inventory, if you read that. I don't know if I've answered your question, but-
Right, and I'm not necessarily saying rezoned from commercial to residential, for example. I'm saying those areas identified as non-developable, being rezoned as parkland, is what I'm looking for. Not necessarily a map that shows, like what you have here, questionable areas and so on. I'm saying it needs to go as far as rezoning those areas of 17 acres, because, to be quite honest, I, I think we should stop referring to it as 17 acres, because really, you only have 3.8 out there that we should potentially look at. The rest should be parkland, the southwest corner of 17 acres should be incorporated into the frog pond and the natural habitat area that's to the north, and all of those areas that have high sloping terrain in excess, in some cases, it's, it's in excess of 30%. And you have up there coastal oak trees that are hundreds of years old.
So I, I think I'm understanding what you're saying in terms of your request, and I just want to put on the table that it, the request for, there is nothing that's being rezoned or being, there's no rezoning going on as part of this housing element adoption, number one. So number two, I feel that, if I'm hearing you right, you have a request for that specific property. What I'm trying to do is frame that in the context of this housing element and the land use inventory. So I have reviewed some of the work that has been done on there and think that we can accurately depict an updated map that shows a reduced area that would have any potential for development at all, closer to the 3.8 acres, and I think that would be accurate. We can work with the city and get those maps from you. I think that the, for the action of the housing element itself, the land use inventory is a basis of factual pieces of information, so I want to be factually correct when I put that in there. It doesn't have a policy associated with that site at this point.
Yeah, and Denise, I'm not asking that you take that on. I mean, the onus is on the city, that, that should be, or those should be areas that we as a city look to preserve and maintain and rezone. And, and we're not there yet. And I understand what, what you're saying, Denise, and I, and I appreciate that, but that's really not what I'm asking for.
Perhaps that, Council can-
Yeah, I just wanted to, to follow up a little bit on what Denise said, and that is that this document identifies buildable sites in the city. It does not preclude a rezoning of the 17-acre parcel in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Another, another question. Could that be a condition to, of recommend passing this on?
It could. You would recommend to the city council with the condition that something you looked at?
Okay, just out of curiosity.
Just a quick comment and a question. I just, just one more time, I'll move on, but the, in reading through here, the, the stuff I read out was just a couple of examples. I mean, through those Supreme Court opinions, it was peppered all through there about, you know, plan of things being, requiring an EIR. I mean, it was, that was just a couple of examples, and I don't know. But I did have a question, though. What, we haven't talked about it yet, but what's the impact of this? Because this is here that-
Airport.
Yeah, the airport, right here. It says, it must be referred to them for consistency determination. So what's that going to, how's that going to come up to works? Because that, it doesn't sound like something's going to happen in a hurry. They, they cancel their meetings all the time anyway, they never, they never seem to ever meet.
The Airport Land Use Commission, I've reported it up in the beginning of this presentation, have prepared that letter. The city has put an application in for consistency determination, and will be on the agenda for the December 16th ALUC meeting, and they have a full agenda, so they're, they're having it.
Okay, well, let's stay optimistic. Okay, but that won't slow it down, then? I, I'm just trying to understand the process, and we move, if we can move ahead even without this, is that, I'm just trying to understand the process, that's all.
No, it's good, it's a fair question. So you, you, you can indeed move ahead tonight and recommend approval to, to the council. The December 16th hearing hopefully does occur and isn't canceled, and they would determine their, they would make their consistency determination. In our informal discussions with them, we believe that, that that will be fairly straightforward, and then the council would hear it on December 17th, where we've set a special meeting. You know, this is, this is a, this is a tough call. This is a, this is hard work in terms of, of Planning Commission decision. From the staff perspective, you know, what, what you have here is, is, is the best staff recommendation from your planning staff, from your council, and your, and your city manager. There, there is risk, no question. My, my, my take on, on Land Watch in general, as it relates to anything going on in Fort Ord, is, is we will be challenged at every step. There is just no question in my mind that that will be how things unfold. They believe they're right, and, and, and that's, that's just going to be how we, how we move forward. We'll continue to have discussions with them, we'll try to continue to have, in fact, I expect to talk to them on the phone tomorrow or the day after. There is, this was always a fairly aggressive timeline to get this housing element adopted into the state before the end of calendar year 2019. There is financial incentive in the form of grants, SP2 grants and other grants, planning grants, that the city wishes to avail itself of, to fund much of the work that's codified in the housing element, that we wish to be able to compete for, and that a housing element passed in 2019 helps us compete for. So, so there is no question that there are, there are tensions built in here at a staff perspect, from the staff perspective and from external, external forces, I'll call them. And so I appreciate your consideration, I appreciate your questions, and, and we're here to answer any, any and all additional questions you have before you make a decision.
I just, one, one thought about that, Dino. And that was my, I was going to beg for one more question. Are there any other current resources that depend on us having our housing element in place for us to compete for than just the one you have? Are there any normal grants and dollars that we would be foregoing if we do not have a housing element? It's, it's like, what are the consequences if, if we don't have one on the 31st, and are they grant money? I'd be interested in that grant money info.
That's a great question. And the, the grants that we know about, that we've applied for, are Senate Bill 2 planning grant for $160,000. Denise's staff filed that application, working with, with city staff 10 days ago, a week ago, fairly recently. It was due by the end of November. That grant of $160,000 is contingent on a housing element in place. We may, the case, that we are making good faith progress on updating our housing element and wish to be considered, and we'll see where that shakes out. There, there are other planning grants from other recent state programs that I don't have on the top of my head, both in terms of what Senate bill or proposition they're tied to, nor dollar amount, but there are additional funds that we would also compete for. Now, I, those of you that know me, I'm a fairly conservative, risk-averse person, and that's probably what you want in a city manager. So I'm not in a big hurry to open this city to any risk. And I just want to stress that, that what, what you're getting tonight is the best recommendation of your planning staff, your council, and, and city manager on, on the recommendation on the way ahead.
There was a, oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
Denise, is it, when you send stuff like this to HCD, is it in their purview to require an EIR if they deem that one's necessary?
The city is the lead agency inter sequo. It makes a environmental determination. When we've talked to them about that, they rely upon the city and the lead agency, the counties, to make a sequo determination. I think if they had seen an issue, they would have mentioned it in their letter.
And has, at the chair, whereof, any, or housing element, general plan amendments gone through any cities, and has Land Watch challenged any of them legally in court?
I'm, I don't know of any experiences, one way or the other, in terms of Land Watch and the, and the housing elements.
And so we start the sixth cycle January, and what does that do?
We start the, through the chair, we start the next four-year cycle where we're required to complete another housing element update within one year. We have to make significant progress, according to HCD, and complete another housing element within a year. So in some ways, the challenge to this housing element will be immediately going into another housing element, it's not a different cycle, it's still fifth cycle, and making some progress toward that within the next year in order for that, HCD to review that and then determine that the city is compliant in terms of housing element law. And once you're compliant in terms of housing element law, that's when, as Dino mentioned, the opportunities for grants and such do come through. So we will be going through this process again, it'll be a shorter version. We'll be looking toward, yeah, going before and having the same sort of open meetings, et cetera. And at that point, too, we'll be looking at what the environmental document would be for whatever that housing element policy, program, and plan is.
So this is really a fluid thing, and we're, this, just because we approve or deny this, it's not, it's not done?
Not done, it's done for, gives us, as Dino said, maybe you said it more appropriately.
It's a place where, well, it sets the conditions for the council to consider, that's where your decision is to make.
Little comment, there are risks, like staff said, the city manager said, there are some good points to it. I don't know if this little ditty has anything to do with this. There was an admiral in charge of the Naval Postgraduate School, and he's, he was pushing computers, and he said, either get on the train or stay at the station. And I think pertaining to our little city that doesn't have a lot of funds, I think state grants and federal grants are very important to us, and I would hate to see something hold that up that, you know, with something like this that is still fluid. So, any of that, unless there's any other questions.
Further comment?
Comments?
Lead open it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have just one other question directed to Attorney Lorca and city managers. So we, we've spoken, great concern about litigation and penalties suffered, and we've also heard of reaping the benefits of compliance to state regulations by a certain deadline. Conversely, are there any potential penalties with non-compliance? We're hearing of cities across the state of California-
We're hearing of cities across the state of California being sued for such non-compliance since the Affordable Housing Act. So how imperative is it that we get to that level of compliance and rid ourselves of such risk, if any?
Through the chair, as I understand it, the, the government code provides that it can be referred to the attorney's general's office, the state can't. I don't know what the appetite of the state would be, especially if we were working diligently to meet the deadline and factor such litigation without our control. But, but as far as specific monetary policies, I'm not aware that there are.
But there is potential.
There's potential that we refer to the attorney general's office, yeah.
Okay, I went out to public comment too soon before, so at this point, I'll just open it up for any questions to public, to step forward and ask any questions, clarifications of what was said.
I don't have either a question or clarification.
Okay, you can sit down then.
My name is Douglas McKenzie. I live at 16 Salsedo. Based on what I've heard, here's what I recommend you all do. I presume that for 160 grand, you can do an EIR. Given that the housing element update, the housing element update rather, is merely aspirational, shouldn't cost, hell, I'll do it for five years. So, and then you take some of the wind out of Land Watch's sails. You come to the court and say, "Hey, we did the EIR. We complied with the statute. Go away." That's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If you'd step forward, please, and give your name, address, social security number, please.
Not everyone knew this by now. Katie Krieger, 3 Quendah. We are in, what, what do we owe for litig-? Like, I'm, I wanted just a review of where we're at in the city as far as paid out monies for litigation.
All litigation over time?
Well, maybe in the past five years. Okay. Because I know we have had some litigation, like with the Fort Ord properties, with the previous developer, right? And I know it's been a big burden for our city. So I'm just coming forward asking for caution in that regard, for us to really move forward cautiously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Rutherford, I live on Via Verde. I guess one of my concerns is knowing the cost of litigation. Could this have been, or could we draft this in a manner so that we don't invite what's already been described as certain litigation from a certain entity by using just existing city properties not Fort Ord? Just, just to be able to accommodate the deadline of the 31st? That way you avoid the certain litigation that all that is going to occur and accomplish what we need to accomplish, which is being qualified for grants. And I'm also just curious, what would happen if we don't meet the deadline with respect to the grants? And I think you said the grant is just potentially available to us because we're not in compliance anyway. Is that correct?
Denise, I'll look for, back me up on this. So I think, so the point on caution is well taken, and we believe we're, we're exercising it. The question about, or the comments about timing, if, if the will of the commission is to suggest recommendations to change the element so that housing occurs only in the current city proper, or that you not approve the negative declaration and recommend that we go with an EIR, then it's my understanding that, certainly staff will execute that, that guidance, first of all. But it's my understanding that in so doing, we, we will certainly not be able to accomplish those prior to the end of the calendar year. If I'm mistaken, please correct me. Because that's an important point. Having said that, those are, those are options. We can go back to HCD and say, "We'd like to take one and one alpha off the table and have all affordable housing built in the remaining sites which are in, in the city proper." And that's exactly what Land Watch would like. And we can have that discussion with HCD, and I honestly have no idea where that would go. I can tell you that based on my interaction with HCD, they've been very prescriptive, very prescriptive in terms of what they want to see in the housing element. And we have quite frankly bent over backwards to comply in order to stay on this aggressive timeline. So it's not, it's not, simply not clear to me what re-engagement with HCD at this point would look like. So that's, that path. In terms of the, the path of going forward with an environmental impact report on the housing element, either as-is or amended, would open up an environmental impact report timeline requiring review, which we would then go through, which would push us past, I'm almost certain, the December 31st deadline. And while it may address one potential threat of liability, as the city attorney has stated, and I firmly believe, it does not preclude future challenge. So I just, it's, again, it's a complex sort of set of circumstances laid out before you, but I wanted to sort of address those. Those are great comments from, from all. And, and there, there aren't simple answers, but I want to be sure that, to the extent we can add clarity for you decision makers here tonight, we, we do so. Do you want to add anything to that? Yes.
Just the process, to identify the process from hereon, the planning commission as a recommending body would make a recommendation to the city council, who would then determine what to do with the housing element in terms of adopting it as currently envisioned or making changes and sending that document to HCD for their review or not adopting it. So in terms of the recommendations that I thought one was the suggestion that Dino identified, you could make a recommendation to the city council to make whatever changes you suggest or want at the, at the council level in relation to the housing element, in terms of taking out certain sites or focusing more on certain sites or making changes to the policy. That would then go to the city council, and we would look at that from a staff report standpoint and provide that information to the council. And they would then make the determination as to approve that or, or not. The, ultimately, the, the HCD gets the document from the city council and will then have 90 days to, to make a certification, certify on it as compliant or non-compliant.
Through the chair, just wanted to also clarify that if we took sites 1A and 1 off the, off the, off the table, that may deal with the Land Watch issue, but that doesn't necessarily preclude all litigation. If we were to do that, there may be a group of neighbors that all of a sudden would arise. I just didn't, didn't want you to think that if, if we did that, all litigation would go away. That would be specific to what Land Watch has indicated to us.
So Alex, before you leave, may I? So, people are gonna sue for anything. Was my, in Lehman's interpretation, as I was reading through this weekend, was that more or less correct or not in, in assuming, or at least what I read was, if you do an EIR, the courts tend to be much more favorable to the cities. It's more, if you haven't done one and they think you should, then they tend, that's a low threshold. But once you do one, there may be litigation, but are the courts more prone to supporting the city once you've done one?
There is more deference in that situation-
Deference, yeah, that's a good word.
-in, in the test here, which is the fair argument test.
Okay. And, and this is actually more for city manager and Denise, but Mr. Rutherford's idea, just comment, though, wow, this whole thing is sort of, as we've had said several times, aspirational and nothing's gonna happen right away, and you probably should turn the tape off. But, I mean, if we're looking at the game, does it get it in by the 31st? That might be something to really seriously think about. I mean, we, we can avoid litigation, we can, if we can, I don't know if we can do it. But if you can do it, I mean, if all we're really trying, what we're trying to do is get this housing element updated, because we're gonna do it again in a year anyway, buy some time, get it in by the 31st, avoid getting ourselves dragged into court, and we, now we bought ourselves 12 months to, or six months since we started talking about it, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's hard, it's hard to know how quickly we could make an amendment to the housing element-
Right.
-and get it through HCD. I, I, every indication that I've had in dealing with them is that it would not, especially considering rolling into Thanksgiving and starting the holidays, that it would be very quick. Let me, let me pose this as a hypothetical to you, since we're looking at course of action. You could approve it tonight as presented with, with the negative declaration and the housing element recommended for adoption. And you could give us the opportunity to continue to engage with Land Watch and say, "Look, we, if, if you're really interested in working with the city and benefiting both your objectives and the city's, let us get this thing across the finish line." There's really one path that I see reasonably to doing that, and that is proceeding tonight, going before the ALUC on the 16th, getting it before the council on the 17th, and getting it up to the state by the 18th. So that we're, we're seen as, as having sent and adopted housing element to the, to the state, and continuing the dialogue with, with Land Watch to say, "Look, we now have to start looking at the housing element again. We have time to breathe. We're happy to look at the various sites. These things aren't set in stone. But let us get across this finish line that we've been working very hard diligently to do so that the city can unlock funding that the state is literally trying to give away to promote housing stock in this state to over the housing crisis we're all experiencing." And I'm committed to doing so as a staff, and I know the, the planning staff is committed to doing so, and I suspect you all would be open to that, the council would be open to that. So, so that is a conversation that I am more than happy to continue to engage with, with Land Watch. I don't see frankly, a modification at this point, getting us where we need to be by the end of the calendar year. And, and it is, it is a, a set of circumstances we find ourselves in that, that we're trying to do our best to negotiate.
Another, a quick question concerning Scott's, the 17 acres. It normally takes a rezone, yours, it's posted three times, it takes three, it's just not, can be adopted tomorrow. Can that be done at a later date after one, if this gets approved? Could, could the, the planning commission or Scott go before the city and ask the council to rezone that in a different way, just to get this going? And I'm wondering if, if you, if you put that in as a condition of this, whether that could even be done? Because-
I think that the, I think that the council needs a clear, and again, jump in if I'm off the rails here. The council needs a, a clear recommendation from this body regarding the, the sequel finding and regarding the housing element. The, the matter of rezoning the 17 acres to open space, it could certainly be attached to a motion as an, as a recommendation for a future zoning amendment change. And, and staff would take that and council would consider it. The, the actual zoning change will be a function of a future zoning ordinance update, which is called for in, in the housing element and could include designation of open space when brought before this body, and then, and then to, to council for approval. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, I like that answer.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I think the housing element as it's currently written takes a good approach in addressing the affordable housing and the, the low income housing requirements and what we need to do to meet those requirements. I think it does a good job. I also agree that I think you'll never be able to stop litigation. I think regardless of what is decided, you always are gonna be open to being legally contested. There's no question about that. So I think regardless, that's always gonna be there. My big concern and my adversity to this is that this document does not rezone 17 acres as written. It needs to be rezoned with those areas identified as parkland, never to be developed.
That could be put as a condition.
Or attached as a motion, right? Is that what you wanted?
You could certainly attach as part of a motion that the council consider a future zoning amendment to rezone the 17 acres into, into open space. Absolutely.
I'd like to just briefly revisit the, the issue, keeps coming up, it's a hot topic, litigation versus the requirement or because of the requirement of the environmental impact report. Can we consider the approval of, recent approval of Senate Bill 35 when, if and when project development, we do reach a project level and development were to be not so aspirational but more realistic? The necessity for such an EIR is therefore, is lessened by way of Senate Bill 35, am I right? Or it could prove to be a, you know, a bargaining chip.
The case law's somewhat unsettled on that, isn't it? Because it's really new.
I honestly am not familiar with Senate Bill 35, so I-
Essentially designed to streamline developments and-
The ADU?
Curve, curve the need for an environmental impact. And then, in which case, the negative declaration would probably suffice. And it could be a reasonable argument against any litigation for not having one against our cities, which is a great concern that we all share. We are a small city with limited coffers.
Berkeley's using, it was in the paper today.
Maybe that would quell concerns.
Yeah, Berkeley's using, it was in the paper today, they're using it to build housing on their land that people have been objecting to, and I don't know all the parameters of it. Yeah, it's really, that's what I'm saying, it's pretty new, so I suspect there's not a lot of case law that's, that's probably pretty unsettled.
I'll say this, we'll avail ourselves of every defense.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned that the state is trying to kind of give the money away, sort of. Does that mean there's not gonna be any of those grants next year, like starting in January?
My understanding of the, of the grant cycles is that there will be future funds available, so it doesn't preclude us from, from competing for future grants. I just, I just know we'll lose the opportunity for competing in, in the current cycle of, of grant funding.
Okay, is there any other questions from, from the public, please?
Sorry. Dino, so you said you met with Land Watch and John Carroll. What's your feeling on whether they'd be willing to negotiate for this next year? Do you feel like that's an option? Since you did talk to them verbally, do you have any sense? Do you feel like they'd be willing to do that?
I don't know. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a great test of how open they are to working with especially a small jurisdiction. I, I don't know the answer to that. I would hope they'd be open to it.
So you did propose that to them?
I did not today, no, I didn't. It was, it was not some, frankly, it wasn't something- It was, it was not, frankly, it wasn't something that, that came to mind at the time.
Okay, this will be the last one. We only like one question, or one person at a time, and we don't want it over and over, and we'll be here all night.
Yeah, I've just been sent wanting to point out, are we referring to the November 14th letter from HCD? It just seems to me that the second paragraph of that letter gives the ammunition we're needing in EIR, because it says basically, they're saying that we are in compliance based on, and if you listen, what it's based on, and I think they're just basically giving ammunition, somebody wants to challenge you based on what they're saying in the second paragraph.
May I offer the response to that? They're, they're talking not about the environmental, California Environmental Quality Act compliance, they're talking about the compliance with housing element law, and whether or not the housing element is considered compliant. So I, I think it's a, it's a different context than the SEQA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody on the commission has any last thing to ask or comment about before I ask for a motion?
My, my last comment is this, you know, I, I like the idea of getting something aspirational out there because that way it will formalize the process, as long as, like, at least these three items are at least considered by the city council, and these, this would be additional things. This is not about, but, but for me to be fully behind that housing element, this idea of engaging with the stakeholders, including, including these guys from Land Watch, or, yeah, Land Watch, a commitment by the city council to challenge that data and those assumptions in that study, because I really think that our fair share is being calculated on, based on some of those things. We have to challenge those. And I think the right time would be this follow-on housing element review, which is, what's, for argument's sake, say, one year, we'll have to redo it again in the next year. And, and a careful consideration of rezoning those 17 acres. Those are the three that I, I would like to see the city council deliberate, think about, investigate.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion, and we'll have comment?
Mr. Chairman, would you, would you entertain a motion to, for, in tandem, for both the recommendation for the approval of the housing element and declaration, negative declaration, or would you like those separately, or?
Both, they can be together.
Right. Then I will make a motion that we approve and recommend to the city council that they adopt the housing element and a negative declaration as presented to the planning commission tonight.
Okay, um, comment?
Can I add the amendments to that?
Or comment and amendments?
Yeah, that we continue to open dialogue with Land Watch, and that the council consider the rezoning of the 17 acres as open space.
As well as challenging data from AMBAG and HCD.
Yes.
I, I would just say, unless there's some sort of commitment on the rezoning, I don't know if I can support it.
Okay, do you accept those conditions?
I've made a motion just as stated, as per staff's recommendations.
For, for the, if the chair, if the chair will consider it, staff's fine with the amendments.
In which case, we will, yes, to answer your question, I am okay with the amendments or the conditions.
Okay, do raise.
So, to reiterate, make a motion that we recommend to city council that they adopt the housing element and approve also the negative declaration pursuant to SEQA, including the aforementioned conditions and amendments.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Three, four? Two against?
Four, two.
Two against.
Four, two.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Aye.
I go there, it's fine.
Thank you.
Four, two. Okay, it was a long meeting. It wasn't in the agenda, but I have comments from commission. I don't know if we have any, anything to consider.
I said it at the beginning, and I'll say it again, thank you for the hard work, and in my mind, there's never a doubt about the professionalism of our staff and, and for you, Ms. Duffy, not a single bit. Thank you for the hard work on this.
Ms. Scott?
Oh, thank you very much.
My pleasure to work, it's a pleasure to work with the staff, thank you.
Thank you, Denise Duffy and Associates, and our city manager, Mr. Pick, and our city attorney, Mr. Lorca, and very much thank you to our citizens for their valuable input as well.
Yep. Ditto, lots of, as Sol said, done, lots of hard work, and it is appreciated. Come to the Christmas party, come see Santa.
I, I want to thank everybody also, it is very tough, having been on this commission for quite a while, you can't look left or right without somebody complaining about you looking left or right and wanting to sue you because of it, so I, I hope that it goes relatively smooth. I, I have been on this commission for many years, I have been vice chair, I have been chair, I have stepped down, I have stepped up, I have stepped down, and at this time, I would like to step down as chair, not as planning commissioner, to give the opportunity to somebody else to step forward and run the show here. So what I'd like to propose, if anybody is interested in being nominated by this board to be, or commissioned to be chair, I think what we can do is, we'll take a, anybody who is interested in it, and next month at our regular scheduled meeting, just essentially do a write-in vote, just get a show of hands of who's interested, and we'll do a vote and appoint a new chair for the upcoming year.
I, I would get interested.
Okay, I would, I, I asked Mike, the vice chair, if he'd be interested, and he politely said, I'm happy being a vice chair, so, no time. So we'll go from there, see everybody next week, our Christmas party, Santa, bring all the kids down, last couple of times, it's...
Come down if you don't have kids. Come down if you don't have kids, right? There's still cookies.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.